Hello and welcome to another edition of Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oil Ling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oil Ling Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hey everyone, really glad to hear today.
We are. We're also really glad that Julie and Colin have joined us today. Hey guys.
Hi everyone.
How's it going everybody?
So today we are excited to be back to talk about a couple of new features on our platform. Last week we came and talked about the new appointment booking feature. So this is something that is useful for you, whether you want to simply integrate your digital calendar into the way your team and customers interact with you, all the way through to selling your time on sessions or through workshops, classes and the like. There's so many ways that you can use this new calendar booking feature. And today we're going to explore a sort of arm of that feature, which is the ability to allow people to book packages of sessions with you. So these can be calls, they can be literal sessions, maybe you're a massage therapist, AFT, raindrop practitioner, and you actually do in person, or this can be for workshops and classes. A lot of really cool stuff that we can do with this and we are going to get into how we can set that up here on today's call. This is a carryover from last week's training where we did introduce and get into the details of how to set up and use the booking system in Get Oil Ling. So highly recommend that you check that out if you haven't done so already. We will spend just a little bit of time demonstrating some of the pieces of it, but today we're really going to be focusing on these packages. So again, welcome. Happy Halloween to you as well. Excited to have you guys here today. All right, we're gonna go ahead and pop out a video and get into today's slides. We also have a live work review here today as well. Sean, do let me know that you're here when you are and we will be bringing you out after we get through today's content. All right, so let's talk about this, you guys. We're gonna talk about how to set up and sell session packages. So while you're here, go ahead and head into the chat. Let us know where you're coming in from. And then let us know how you would like to use a feature like this. And we might be able to actually spend some time with you today discussing how you could set that very thing up. I'm going to be providing some examples for you here today for different types of use cases. But I think it might be even more valuable to actually demonstrate one from you guys here today if you'd like. So definitely feel free to head into the chat and let me know. Today we are going to be talking about how to set up session packages, your different options for offering those packages and some specific use cases. And of course, as always, we will get into live help and Q and A. This is a live opportunity for you to not just learn how to use Get Oil Ling, but also how to learn how to run your business more effectively, right? So it's not just about the tech, it's about how you use it. So if you have questions about anything regarding what we're talking about today or something else that you're working on in your Get Oil Ling system, add those questions to the Q and A. No question is a wrong question. We have a great opportunity here to work with you live and serve you. You not only have the content that I'm bringing to you here to train on today. You've got the guy that built the platform right here in the chat. And you've got Colin and Julie, who are absolute experts in the system, joining us as well. So add those to the Q and A. And if you'd like to join us on a future call like this, you can. We'd love for you to join us if you're watching this as a replay. Getoiling.com/weeklyworksession is where you want to go. You'll get on the list and you will get the link to join us on Zoom when we go live every Thursday at noon US Eastern Time. Now, if you'd like to work together on a call like this one, like I will be doing with Sean later on on this call, you can go to GetOilLing.com/websitereview. This is not limited to your website. This can be your systems. It can be getting started with us. This is an opportunity that we offer every week in the second half of our calls for us to work together on whatever you're working on in your Get Oil Ling system. And if you'd like to hand off some of that work, let someone do the work for you, maybe some of the design, some of the build, or you just want someone to work alongside you, GetOilLing.com/conceivers. We have incredibly talented, amazing people that are ready to help you achieve your dreams with this system. All right, so now let's get into this. Get Oil Ling, so excited about this. We now have built-in calendar booking, which we talked about last week, and we have the ability to offer packages of booked calls or sessions. So not just you can book me when it's time to book me, but you can book me for six sessions and only six sessions. And after six, you gotta go buy another six, right? That kind of thing. You can use this for so many things. We can talk about a lot of those things today. But this is just such a really cool add-on to the ability to book onto your calendar straight from your system, integrating automations, campaigns, redirects, all that kind of stuff that is all inside of your Get Oil Ling account. And of course, you have it all in one place. So before we get started, I want you to center yourself around the following. First, and this is going to be different for each thing that you offer. If you are one of those multi-talented, multi-passionate people that offer lots of stuff, start with one. First, let's get clear on what it is that you are offering, right? And you're going to be offering this either on one-on-one or group sessions. It will be in-person or it will be virtual, right? So get clear on what that thing is. And what you want to do is also first, again, before we go and start building anything in the system, we need this clarity. What are we calling it? What's the description? What are we charging for it if we're charging for it? And what availability of hours are we going to plug in, right? When are we available to actually deliver this thing that we're offering? The next question you want to get clear on is whether or not this will be a standalone package or part of something that already exists. And we'll talk again about what that distinction looks like if you are unclear, but be thinking about that. And importantly, if this series of calls or sessions that you're offering is something you intend to sell, be sure that you have Stripe connected to your Get Oil Ling account, all right? And that's going to be right over here. If you go into your account settings, it's payment processing. Definitely head over there, set that up. You have to actually create an account with Stripe. That's a payment processor. Get all of that information plugged in and then you'll be able to take payments on your Get Oil Ling site. Quick note, do make sure that you go into your website settings and disable anything mentioning CBD before you move forward, right? We do have some built-in themes in Get Oil Ling that have featured the Nature's Ultra products that Young Living has. And you just really want to make sure that you don't have that showing because they have Stripe has some pretty strict, excuse me, prohibitions about the mention of CBD, even though you aren't actually somebody who sells it, right? So do make sure that you have that mention removed before you try to connect Stripe. All right, so let's talk about this. What do we want to offer? Paula says, I'd like to set up on my site AFT sessions. Awesome. You have an email address, but when you start to try to use Google Calendar, make you use Gmail. All right, we can talk about that here in just a bit for sure. So what do we want to offer? You guys get into the chat, don't be shy. Do you want to offer a series of wellness scans, right? Do you want scans or wellness consults for your customers to help them on their hero product journey? Maybe you are a coach and you want to sell your time. Maybe you offer services, right? Massage, AFT, and you want to sell those services. What does that look like for you? What do you want to offer? So it's important for you to know whether this is something that you're selling or if it's something that is a value add for your customers. So one of the first examples that I'm going to actually show for you guys is how you can put something like this together to get your customers onto a series of calls with you so that you can get them locked in on hero products, right? I'm seeing these coming in. We've got, oh, you guys are doing so much great stuff. AFT yoga, Itovi, raindrop, a vault membership with group sessions, coaching and wellness consults, link scans, raindrop, Vitaflex, foot detoxes, sound healing, Zito consults. Oh, I love it. Oh, I love it. This is so great, you guys. So we are going to get into how we can offer packages, bundles of this stuff right here on your Get Oil Ling platform, all right? So listen, you can offer calls, right? You can connect Zoom here and you can meet on Zoom and it's one click and done and it's super easy. But what if you don't actually meet virtually? What if you meet in person? What if you are offering raindrop, right? Or you're offering massage or you're offering yoga classes? You can do that with this feature as well, both the individual bookings and the package bookings that we'll talk about here today. So here's an example. I love this one. I think that if you are a brand partner and you're signing up customers that you would like to fall in love with product and order from Young Living Forever, you should do this. Set up a series of 12 wellness consults or wellness scans. If you do Zito or Itovi, set up a series of 12 consults for your customers on their 90-day hero product journey. So you're going to be booking out those calls ahead of time in this package, right? So you know you're going to be meeting on a weekly basis to touch base on their accountability, on how they're using products, making sure that this is something that they are actually integrating in their life toward the goal that they're looking to reach. This is something that you don't have to worry about trying to sell this. It's the easiest thing you can do is set up a series of calls that are essentially your care calls, your accountability calls for your customers who have goals with how they're using product. If you have a yoga studio, maybe you do a six or a 10 class pack for your yoga studio. And this could be in-person or virtual yoga classes. Maybe you offer a four AFT session bonus for anyone who becomes a loyalty member and stays on loyalty for six months. Maybe you have an online course and you offer three live workshops as a bonus or an upsell. Maybe they pay a little extra and they get access to these three workshops. All of these are things that you can do with this new system. And of course, the sky's the limit. These are just a few examples that might pertain to what you guys do. So the first thing that we want to do in our system is create a call package. So let's go and take a look really quick at what that looks like, where you go in your Get Oil Ling system to do this. All right, so we're in our dashboard right now. We're going to look over here under bookings, right? It's going to be down just a bit under bookings and we're going to go to call packages. And here we can actually add a call package. Now I'm going to show you really quickly, I'm going to show you some call packages that I already have set up in my own account. And we're going to take a look at that together. And of course, my browser is choosing to freeze right now, which is a little weird. There we go. Awesome. Okay, so I'm going to go to my call packages here. You can actually see that I've got a six-week wellness series set up. I'll show you what it looks like to actually set one up, but then I want to show you what I actually have set up because it can take a little bit of time. So here's my call package. And here you put in the name and this is just like setting up a booking type, right? So last week we talked about creating booking types and then sharing them. The call packages are relatively similar. You're going to give it a name, a duration of time, the Zoom meeting or other location that you might be using. Maybe this is the address for your studio. You choose the calendar. Again, make sure you check out last week's training if you have not learned the calendar connection just yet. Choose the calendar that you want to use and then you can give a description of what this is. And you can choose what kind of information you want to gather. You can give it nice colors, et cetera. Now this is a call package, so we need to determine how many calls are in this package, right? So this is, in this case, it's 12. And then this is going to be something you come back and fill out. If, for instance, this is a package of calls that someone purchases and when they run out of calls or sessions with you, you want them to be able to go purchase more, you're going to want to put whatever the link is where you're selling this package right here. Okay, so if you have a page that's already created, then you would go and you would paste the URL in here or you know, the vault checkout link or whatever, the store link on your website. Or you save this for now and then come back after you've created it, okay? So if you plan to use this, this calendar booking that we are creating right now, if you plan to use this as a standalone link, meaning you're just going to send them a straight link to, let me just show you an example here of the one that's already made. If you want to just send them to a page that looks like this, where they could go in and book, then you, you can do that or you could embed this into a page on your website. If your plan is to share the link to this calendar directly, you want to be mindful of what you put here. Do this when someone books, right? So do you want to tag them for a purpose? Do you want to send them a campaign? Do you want an automation to run? I highly recommend utilizing, if you're going to be again, sending them straight to a calendar like this, you could just send them to the built-in confirmation page because it will generate a confirmation for whatever date and time that they just selected, right? So just utilize this or you could send them to a page on your site if you choose. We did get into scheduling settings last week. You of course do want to make sure that you're checking availability against other calendars. You might have set up your availability for when you would be able to take these calls. And then depending on the, the nature of the package. So for instance, if this is a 90-day series, right? We're meeting every week for about 12 to 13 weeks. Then I would be, I would book this 90 days into the future, right? So they can book up to 90 days in the future. And minimum notice is really going to be how much time do you want them to give before you get on a call? I like to have 24 hours in a lot of cases if someone is expected to share information with me ahead of time. But if it's a quick check-in, then you obviously can lower this significantly, right? So if somebody has homework and I need to review homework, they need to send that to me 24 hours ahead. But if you are offering a yoga class, by all means, you could put zero in here, right? Or one or two, however long you think it works for you. Buffer time is in between the, the calls, right? So do you want some time beforehand and after and so on? Now, if you are offering a series of classes, let's just say for instance, you have a, you have a yoga class every Tuesday from nine till 11 and then another one from seven to nine. And then you'd have a different schedule Wednesday, Thursday, et cetera. You want to make sure that whatever availability you're setting up here is for those specific times, right? So an example would be if I pop out of here real quick and go to our, go to our dashboard here. I'll show you an example of a booking that is for a timed event. So this, let's see, oops, that's not it. Okay, this is not working the way that I want it to. Basically what I, I need to log out and go back in. Sorry guys. So basically what you want to do, let's just say you have a workshop that has a set date and time or day of the week and time. So every Tuesday you have yoga classes at particular times. You don't want to put any availability on your calendar that's outside of that time. All right, so I am in the correct account now and can show you guys what I'm talking about. And this particular instance is actually, and this is just under booking types. This is the live work review. So if you signed up for a live work review with Get Oil Ling, then you have signed up for one of these. And this happens on our weekly call at noon US Eastern Time. So here's Eastern Time and it's Thursdays and it's noon and it's an hour long, right? And so the only time that this is ever available is on Thursdays at noon, right? So if we go and we look Thursday noon, right? Thursday noon and that's available, you know, however far in advance you want to do it, okay? So this is the important thing to remember. If this is a call that can be set with you inside of a particular span of time, meaning any time between nine and noon, et cetera. This is going to be for like coaching calls, consults, things like that, where you're probably meeting one-on-one with one person. But if this is a package that gives access to workshops, classes, et cetera, then you want to make sure that you are creating your availability in such a way that it reflects only the availability of those scheduled times that those things are made available for your, your people to book. Okay, so let me get right back over here into this where we were. Okay. So let me see, we did our scheduling. All right, email and text reminders. We did talk about this last week. You can choose, it's already built in to have an email go out 24 hours ahead and an hour before. You can modify these to your liking. You can include text. If you want to do that, then definitely make sure that you show the phone and require the phone if you plan to, to show or share text reminders. All right, so that is that. Let me get back over here to our slides just to keep us on track here. So that's more or less how you're going to create your call package. You got to have your time parameters. You have to describe what it is. And, and of course, you need to make sure that you're clear on all of the details surrounding it in terms of how you are bookable. Now, when we decide to share this booking opportunity, we have two options. But the, but the important thing to remember is that how they get enrolled into a booking instance for you. So like a package like this matters. So for someone to be able to visit a booking page for a package and use it, they must actually be enrolled in a package. Now, what does that mean? Let's go take a look. If I were to go right now and view this and try to sign up, so I can actually see the time. I can see the dates. I can see the times. I'm going to go and pick a time here and I'm going to put in. I don't know that I actually have this one signed up. You're going, they're going to get a, either a confirmation because they're, they are actually enrolled or they'll see this error message. So there are no remaining appointments for you that are available to be booked. Please contact me if you have questions. So if someone isn't actually enrolled in your series, they're going to get an error message. Or if they're enrolled in your series and they're using the wrong email, they will get an error message. So here's how you know if somebody is actually signed up for one of your call packages. Number one, you could actually go and look and see if they have booked anything with you. And I don't know that I have anyone here. That's not on a package, no. So here, I'll actually go to this, this contact here and I'm going to enroll this person down here and contact pack, call packages in that series. Here's my six-week wellness series. I've given access. So now if I go and attempt to book here, again, let me just go back. I'm just going to reload this page. And I'm going to go try to book again. So now this person is enrolled and you'll be able to see, see, we've got the confirmation of the date and time. And it also says I have five calls remaining in this package, not including the one that I just booked. We can also go ahead and book more calls, right? You can do this with the client. You can do this for the client or they can do it for themselves. But in order for them to utilize a page like this one, they need to be enrolled. And I'm going to go through all of the different ways that you can enroll someone into a call package here in just a bit, but it is really important for you to know that you need to add them to the call package or they need to add themselves by a way that you've made available for them to be able to actually book themselves. Okay, so let's talk a little bit more about that. So they have to be enrolled in a package to be able to book and use the email address, of course, that's in their contact card that's enrolled in this package. You have the option to manually enroll your contacts, which I just showed you how to do, or to allow self-enrollment, right? So this could be landing pages, page forms, vault checkouts, where you would actually use an automation to do this. So automations can enroll people into call packages as well. That automation link could be clicked from an email or inside a member area. And then once they're enrolled, they can use that direct calendar link or you can embed that calendar onto a page on your website or in your member area to have them book those sessions, okay? So this I just showed you, right, where you're going to add that contact to this six-week wellness series package. We're going to give this package to the contact. The other options, so if you have a landing page, you're not going to be taking payment if you're using the landing page feature in Get Oil Ling. You want to make sure that down here at the bottom, we are applying the call package when they register. You here would maybe want to send a campaign that gives them the booking link. And you can also optionally either redirect to the booking link or to the confirmation page. And remember, the booking link is that thing that I just showed you, right? It's this guy right here, this booking link. You can send them to that directly, either from the campaign or you could do that after registration here. And of course, you do want to make sure that when they register on that landing page, this is the landing page settings, that you're giving them access to that call series. If you're using a page and you're not taking payment, then you can of course send a campaign with that booking link if you want to. You can redirect to that booking link or to a confirmation page telling them to check their email for the campaign. And of course, you do want to give access to the call booking package. So this is in the what to do after a lead registers tab of the settings, the lead settings of a page. Now, what if you're taking payment? Well, you need to set up payments, require payment, select Stripe as your payment processor, whichever version of Stripe that you have connected, and then you set up your payment options. Now you can connect a call package directly right here on these different payment options. You can differentiate campaigns that you send, automations you apply, et cetera, right? So you can sell these packages from pages. And if you would like to include a package with the sale of a vault, you're going to want to create an automation that adds them to the call booking package and attach that automation either in the vault checkout page, if it's a paid vault or, or a free option as well. If you are offering the vault for free, you could put that in the vault's advanced settings. Now, if you're using the store, you can also, if somebody purchases something from your store, that can also enroll them in this booking package. So if you wanted to sell a package of six calls or six AFT sessions directly from your store, six yoga classes, et cetera, from your store, six workshops, you can connect that call booking package right here in the store. All right, now, once someone is enrolled, we have a couple of options to share. Again, you could embed onto a page or you can just go to your booking packages, click get link or click the view booking page to retrieve the link to share. Now, if you are selling sessions, really important to remember, you're going to be taking payment, of course, on a page at the vault checkout level where you're applying an automation that, that applies the, the session package to the client or you will be attaching this to the store. Now, if you choose to use a page, you do have the option to add that booking calendar to the sales page itself so that when they are putting in their payment information, they can go ahead and book their first call or session or class with you at the same time. And you also have the option, if that's not important, if you don't need them or even want them, to book their first session when they are purchasing the package. You can choose to redirect to that booking page, right? And you can use a campaign to send that to them as well. All right, now let's talk about some use cases and we can start exploring more of the setup of this for your unique use cases. Now, forgive me, this recording and sharing calls should not be the title of this. That is not something that I change oversight on my part. Sorry about that. So if you are offering wellness consults or wellness scans for your Young Living customers or team, you can also offer coaching calls, consulting packages that are paid. You could offer service packages that are paid, class workshops, yoga, you know, whatever that looks like for you. So many different options here. So let's talk about the different ones. And again, I've outlined a couple of use cases here. If you've got one you'd like to discuss, pop your hand up here on the call and let me know, leave a comment in the chat about what you would like to set up. And we can even discuss kind of how you might set that up in your system. Now, this is the one that I mentioned previously that I think everyone should consider using if you are doing what we recommend, which is working with your customers to help them find a hero product, right? And doing that over the course of a series of like 90 days where you are getting to know their goals and then helping them stay accountable to the product use and other activities that will help them reach that goal, right? So this is a customer wellness consult package. You can call this something that's worth a, you know, a particular dollar value, but you are offering it for free to your customers who are maybe on loyalty rewards or it's just what you do for your customers, right? So what I would do in this case is I would create a call package with 12 calls, right? So our initial call is going to be the kickoff of 90 days and then they will have 12 more calls that they can book with me. Because if you divide 90 by 12, it's, you know, it's between 12 or sorry, 90 by seven, which is seven days in a week. Then you've got about 12 or 13 weeks of calls that you can have, right? So allow booking because this is a 90-day plan. We're going to allow booking 90 days in the future. And then you can manually enroll a customer who expresses interest in working with you for 90 days. in working with you for ninety days to achieve a goal. You can also, if you, uh, maybe have a booking form that you use or an intake form, a questionnaire for your young living customers, asking them about their goals and what they've tried and what, you know, what they would like to do, et cetera. You can use, um, this booking, like you could basically enroll them on that package after they fill out that form. And then on your first call, you can agree, uh, on your schedule and you can go ahead and set them up for all of the calls with you. So maybe we're going to be meeting at ten thirty AM on Friday for the next ninety days. I'm going to go ahead and set that up right now. It'll take you a few minutes. And now your client is already there, they're set up. They don't have to think about it. They'll get the reminders. You don't have to remember to remind them and they do have the option to reschedule with you, which is pretty cool. So again, if you're offering a call package for your customers and this is free, right, it's free. Obviously, in exchange for them buying product. I want to encourage you, strongly encourage you to book all of your calls with them ahead of time. It's just twelve or thirteen calls. Book them all ahead of time so that you don't have to worry about anything hanging. Get the commitment, let them know, hey, there are links that will, uh, go out where you can reschedule if you must. Right, so book ahead of time if this is free. Now, if you're selling coaching or consulting packages, you're going to create a call package with a set number of calls. Maybe that is a monthly call for six months. Maybe it's a weekly call for six weeks, whatever that looks like. You're going to, in accordance with, uh, however this program or package is set up, you're going to allow a certain amount of time in advance, right? So if you're offering a six week series, then you're going to allow booking up to six weeks in advance. And again, in, in a case like this, um, let's go ahead and set those calls up on your intake call, your very first call. Hey, we're going to be meeting, you know, once a week for the next six weeks. What's the best date and time for you? Let's go ahead and get it scheduled, right? And you can just go ahead and knock that out. You can attach this call package to your point of sale for your coaching or consulting. So that would be a sales page, a listing in your store or a vault checkout, if part of what you're offering is in a vault. And of course, if you are doing this, you can include a link to book in your redirect or your campaign or you can attach it, uh, to your, um, to the page, right? And then you also have the option, like I mentioned previously, to a- attach that point of sale to your, uh, to your booking link so that people can rebuy. So let me come back over here real quick and let's take a look at this together. Uh, so I have in here, let's just go ahead and set this up really quick. Uh, so here's our bookings call packages. Here's my six week wellness series. Now, I believe I actually have a page that I've created on this site where I can show you where this is being offered. So this is going to be, I believe this is six week wellness. Uh, okay, hold on, sorry. Here we go, six week strategy series. I need to rename this. All right, so let's take a look at this real quick. This is just a very basic example of a page that you can use. If you are enrolling somebody onto a package like this from a call, then you really don't need to have a very involved sales page. You just need to take them to where they can check out. Let me go ahead and attach a payment processor here, because it wants me to do that. And then we can actually go take a look at what this looks like. So this is me selling a six week series. Um, I have, you know, fill out the form below. They're opted into the six week series. They put their name in, they put their, um, they put all their information in here and they're able to move forward. I actually have a coupon code that I will give to my existing clients that have already paid for a package with me. They will have that and that, of course, will bring their total to zero here. So let me go ahead and sign up for this. And it does say on the next page, you'll be able to book our first call. So what I've done here is I am redirecting to that six week strategy series. And, uh, and of course, here they can go and book their first call in the series with me, right? So that's what that looks like. Let me actually show you how we have this page set up. Now, in this instance, they don't need to, or I don't want them to actually book their first call at the point of payment, right, or at the point of sale. I want them to do that after the fact. So, um, what I've done here is I do have payment set up and I've got my tags. I've even got one indicating whether or not they got the free version. And of course, here, I need to add them to that six week wellness series package. All right, so once I have that payment set up, we can go to leads. And I've gone to, um, let me see, this is where you do have the option to actually show the calendar booking form right there on the page. So I'll show you what this looks like if, um, if we wanted to use this for that purpose. Let me just go down here and save this and show you. Right, so they can put their information in here, put their payment in here, and then of course, sign up for the date for when they would like to get started, right? So you do have the option to include it right there on the page if you choose. Okay, uh, and I think that's basically it. Yeah, then after they register, if you are setting up your page for free, of course, you can, uh, attach the call booking down here. You can send them to the, um, the scheduler here. Uh, and you can, of course, opt to use a campaign as well. All right, let's get back over here. That was our coaching and consulting packages. If you're offering services, I recommend that you create a call package for each service, right? Uh, if you sell one off, then you're just going to be creating a booking type. If you're selling three of that same thing, then you would create a package for it. So maybe somebody can buy a single yoga class, uh, and that's under the booking types. Then they can have a package of yoga classes. Maybe you're doing ten of them. You would create a call package for that pack of ten, right? Maybe you offer yoga and A F T. You would have individual booking types. If somebody's just buying a single A F T session, you would create a package for A F T sessions if you want to offer a package of those sessions, right? So depending on how you're offering, what you're offering, you obviously need to adjust what booking in advance looks like, right? So it needs to be in accordance with the package. If somebody buys a ten class pass and, um, they need to use it up within six months, then you need to make sure that they, um, that the, the booking time is only a certain amount of time in advance, right? Then you can attach this package, uh, to your point of sale. Again, your options are to tell them on the sales page, this is what you'll get, and then send them to the booking page, right? Or like I just showed you, you can attach the calendar where they can book their first in the package, uh, right away when they're taking payment. All right, and then, yep, so if we, uh, the other thing is to attach that point of sale to the URL, uh, for booking, rebuying. I actually haven't shown you that yet. Let me show you what that looks like. So let's go back over to our, here's our six week wellness series. This is the page where it can be purchased again. I'm copying that link. And so right down here, I've actually already pasted it here. So if somebody runs out of calls, this is going to, uh, they'll, they'll be redirected here when they try to book. Right, uh, and you could create a new or unique instance for this, uh, that is for somebody who is rebuying. Maybe you have, uh, special pricing for existing clients, or maybe you just want to include copy on the page that thanks them and welcomes them back for another series, right? So I wouldn't necessarily send them straight to the original sales page. You can. It would be a better user experience, uh, to send them to something that's just slightly different that recognizes, uh, why they're there. All right, uh, and then of course, um, what I would do, if you are offering multiple services, one-off services, packages, I would have a services page on your website. And then they list basically and then point off to each page for each type of service, right? So on your, uh, yoga page, uh, or A F T page, you might have the listing for, um, for, for a, a single, um, purchasing a single session or you might have a multi-class pack, right? So you can have individual pages for each of these things that you sell, uh, or you could create, you know, multiple options, right? So here is my A F T page, buy one or buy a pack of ten. And then in the payment options for that page, you would be either applying a package, right? Or you would be sending them to, uh, a booking type where they can actually just book the single call with you. All right, uh, now let's talk about classes and workshops. So, uh, if you're creating a call package, of course, uh, you need to have whatever the number of calls is that you're selling. Their ability to book needs to be based on when you need this package to be used up or what the span of time is that you're working with that client on. And then you're wanting, going to want to create a page that offers or sells your workshops that clearly states the schedule, right? So this is going to be similar to the yoga example that I've kept coming back to. If you offer, um, weekly classes at a specific time uh, and you're offering somebody, you're going to be showing up every single week, uh, at eight o'clock on Wednesdays, regardless of who signs up for it, you're going to be offering a workshop. And you know, it's X number of dollars per workshop, or you get them for free for a certain amount before you have to re-enroll. Then, you know, they can pick of the, you know, upcoming twenty workshops you'll be doing on Wednesdays, they can pick six of them because they got a six class package, right? So that's essentially what that looks like, is you're going to create a page that says every Wednesday at eight o'clock, I do this. And when you sign up, you've got your option to show up to this many of these, right? And, uh, and of course, again, you can connect that booking calendar to the page directly or you could redirect, um, or link them to the booking calendar to book those sessions, uh, after they've purchased. All right, so let's go look at some examples. Uh, we get into the chat here and see, um, I think Paula came through first. Let me see. You like to set up A F T sessions, um. Awesome, all right, let me bring you out here real quick if that's okay with you. Uh, pop your hand up Paula and let me know if, if that's okay. I know you came in first, uh, mentioning that specific thing. And I think that there are a lot of folks here, uh, that are A F T practitioners. So if that's something that would be helpful to you, uh, then, um, we can take a quick look at that together and then Sean will be bringing you out in just a moment. Hey Paula.
Hey, how are you?
Good, how about you?
Good, I just, I just barely caught you. I was listening to something else.
All right, yeah, so I'm gonna pop into your account and let's, um, yeah, let's talk about, um, your A F T sessions. Now, I know that you already have, uh, a page on your website where you are selling A F T sessions, right?
Yes.
Okay, so have we set up any booking types or packages so far? Oh, yes, you have.
Yes. I've tried to use everything to figure out how it works and, um, yeah, I have the three sessions there. I don't know if I have, have everything set up correctly, but I mean, the way that, that's most efficient, but I do have them set up.
Okay, excellent, excellent. Yeah, so, uh, where, let's, let's go ahead and just grab this booking link. And I'm going to get out of all of these other things that I have open here. So here's our booking link. And where is this being offered on your site?
It's on the front page, the homepage.
Okay. All right. So we can go to home and take a look.
That's the single session.
Okay. Beautiful, yes. Okay, so that's our single session and, um, are you putting the packages anywhere?
Yes, the package is, just keep scrolling down, you'll find it.
Okay.
A little bit, little bit more. There it is.
Perfect, okay. I wouldn't, I would maybe copy this section onto the page where you are selling a single session, if you haven't done so already.
Okay, great, great idea.
Yeah, just because if they're already interested in maybe booking one call with you, they might go ahead and, and, and book the three. Beautiful. I love it, okay. So then what we're doing here, excellent, is we're using a pop-up. We're letting them book their first one. And then we've got awesome, no, this is great. You've got a little bit of an intake questionnaire and you've got payment information. Fabulous, no, this, this looks, looks really good.
Now, what I did for the two different prices, I don't know if I did it most, the most efficient way, but I made a duplicate of the page so that I can charge either a hundred and fifty or a hundred and eighty and put them in, um, s- slightly different packages.
So I think there's nothing wrong with that. I do think that it would be fine, uh, for you to use the either or. And then, so it's up to you, right? Um, I think this is okay. There's not necessarily anything wrong with it. However, um, when we're sending them to another page, that can feel a little confusing.
Well, it looks exactly, but they don't know they're on another page. It's exact, looks exactly the same to them. It's just that I, I collect their address so I can send out the samples of the oils.
Oh, understood, okay, no, that's perfect. Nope, no changes. That's great, love it. Hope that looks really, really good. Cool, um, do you have any questions about this? I mean, you, this looks like you, you've got this pretty well figured out. So pretty.
Well, I did learn, uh, that, you know, that, that link that you can put on there on the call packages to, um, offer, you know, maybe another package or more sessions afterwards. That's something I learned today, so I'm going to have to incorporate that in there somehow. We'll have to do a little brainstorming on that. But yeah, it's, um, right there, that, that one, I didn't even realize I could do that there, I guess. There's just so much you could do with them. So I'm going to have to decide, you know, once they get through with their three, uh, sessions, I want to offer them more. Also, I have, um, in my vault, I have free, um, classes for team, uh, team members, three sessions, I mean, three A F T sessions for team members. So there's a, another one. There's three things I'm doing there.
So you're offering this, um, so you, you're enrolling them just directly from the vault? Onto the session.
No, it's not that one. It's, it's not a call package. It's a single, um, uh, let's see, what do you call it? Book, um, booking types, booked meeting. Is it, it's the meeting, I guess. Okay, let's see. Yes, there, that one is in the vault for, uh, anybody who, you know, is on my team. So they can, they can, uh, book their, their session from the vault.
Excellent, excellent. So I, I highly recommend doing something like that. I, I think everybody who's watching this is a really good idea. You can include a page in the vault that has the intake form uh, and, and then have that page apply, eh, e- even a series, if you wanted to offer them three, right? I mean, I know you're offering one here, but if you wanted to offer a series or that twelve part option, right? Like if you want to do, do, do a ninety day, you could have people enroll themselves there. And you can do that again via a page with an intake form, which if you're going to do a ninety day series, I would use an intake form that's having them really clearly state and write out their goals, et cetera. But then you can apply a package from there. And so this also gives you a way to, um, really kind of give more structure and automation to the way that you're serving your customers, so that they're getting more perceived value and you're getting more value out of your time, uh, because it's just more organized. You don't have to chase them down. Are you using an intake form in your vault for, for, uh, the complimentary?
It's just a link there, but yeah, I need to make a page and you can put that in my vault.
Yeah, well, this is a thing to if we look at the booking types, so this complimentary session, you do have the option for anybody who, if, if you don't know this, you can, uh, limit to specific contacts. So right here, this can be only contacts.
Okay, I just realized that vault. There's another one, there's another one that says Y L. That one, that's the one that's involved, yes.
Got you, got you, yeah. So, um, but yeah, in this case, there you go. There's your specific contacts only, it's only these contacts in this vault. You could also use a tag for this or even put individual, uh, people here. Awesome, thank you for, for showing, uh, and telling with that Paula and it, it looks really nice.
Thank you, I guess I did it, I did it okay.
Oh, you, you did it great. You tend to. Thanks for coming out.
Thanks, thank you.
All right, Sean. We are going to take a look at a funnel that you're going to be launching this evening. Is that correct, ma'am?
Yes, hi, how are you?
Hi, good to hear from you.
Paula's website, man, that website looks great.
Always does, it's so pretty.
Thanks for sharing.
All right, so, um, we are talking about, let me pull up your, your landing page here. All right, so we discussed this just a little bit earlier today and it's this tame your cravings in three days. Now, you had mentioned when you were testing this, uh, that folks weren't Uh that folks weren't getting the correct uh confirmation information.
Correct.
Yeah, so I love it, it's, you you do a really nice job with bright colors and design too. You do nice with this, I like.
Thank you, thank you for the videos. I was sitting with one screen with your video going step by step.
Good. Alright, so.
I I cannot take the credit.
So what um what's happening here? Uh is you've got the default campaign setting here under campaigns. Now, just a real quick, a real quick re- rewind to what that is for anyone who doesn't know. Is if you go to your contact settings. And then you go to your general settings. There is a built-in default campaign. Now, I probably at my. Um at my advice, you have selected no campaign here, um which is ideal if you are someone who has. Um highly customized the way that you use your site. If you're using Get Oiling with the built-in themes and that's the main thing that you're doing. And you're not creating your own lead magnets and all that kind of stuff, there is a built-in new prospects campaign that's here automatically. If that's not the main thing that you wanna have going out, you should either create the main thing you wanna have going out or just select no campaign. Uh and so no campaign is what's selected. And so what that means is, is that when people are opting in on this landing page, they're not getting any emails from you at all. So what we need to do, cuz I know you've been working on a campaign, is we need to find that campaign from in here. And I believe it's this one, tame your cravings in three days. You've built a campaign, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so we could even uh go edit that and just kind of verify that it is correct. This one is currently disabled. Don't know why. It looks good.
Um because I was playing around with it and got stuck.
Okay.
I didn't want it to, I didn't want it to be, uh you know, because when I play around with it. Um it, it ends up showing cuz I use myself as a, as a tester. Um yeah, so anyway.
Okay, so.
So that's the wrong one.
Yeah, so have you uploaded the um the correct one to your files? Okay.
I did.
Alright, there we go, tame your cravings.
So, yeah.
Alright, so now all we need to do here is um I'm just gonna pull up our uh insert or manage files. And I'm just gonna copy this link because you already have everything formatted the way you want it, and then we could just replace the link here. In the URL field. Alright, so now when this is clicked. There you go. And that's the one that you created. Right?
Yes, so even in in, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, no, go ahead.
So even when the PDF that was created from Canva, does it need to have any hyperlinks in there?
It depends on what you want the PDF to do. If you want the PDF to send them somewhere, then yes, but if you're just offering a guide. To give them a guide, it doesn't have to, it certainly doesn't have to.
Okay, okay. As I wanted to um put the sign in, sign up in there in the PDF too. So that if they. To, cuz this is a um a sign up class, this is a class for them to sign up in. Sign up to.
Are they, they're signing up for the class on this landing page?
Correct.
So then whatever you're sending them.
And so if there's. Right, that's what I wanna send, um what you're working on now is what I want them to get right after.
Oh, well, so they are, there's no way for them to get that PDF unless they sign up right here.
Right, that's what I'm, that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah, so so they are actually committing to this class. When they sign up on this page. And when they sign up on this page, what needs to go out next is here's a guide. Here's a, like, here's an overview, like, hey, just a reminder, you signed up for uh this date, this time, etc. Which for some reason is not actually showing up on the published page. Are we seeing that? That's right? This is.
Yeah, I know, okay, something just happened. Yeah, that's.
Okay, so what you might want to do, just given the volume of copy that you want to use here. Um, but actually, here's what I would do if it were me. I would take this information off. Just to give more space to what's down here, I might shrink the size of this text here. Cuz really, this is the important thing, are you this, are you this, are you this? If so, here are the dates. Right? Um and then this type of information, talking about who you help and how. If you have in your um. In your website settings. Uh or sorry, my story and photo settings. If you wanna show this on your landing pages. It's gonna have this about Sean at the bottom of the page. Right? So that way you have more real estate for what you're actually offering here. So I would um. I would get rid of this and let's actually see if. If this makes a difference, and I'm gonna go ahead and save the addition of this to your um. Landing pages as well. Uh so let's save and view that. Ah, see, there it is. So now they can actually see the date, that's really important, right? I know what they're signing up for, uh and then, yeah, perfect. And then, of course, we've got all this great stuff down here at the bottom, right? So um, yeah, so when they sign up here, they are registering for this. And then the email that's going to go out to them, let's go back here, the email that's going to go out to them. Let me, let's go back to that campaign here. Should um reiterate what they just signed up for. Right, so here, um congrats on taking the first steps. Go ahead and have my email to your address book, I'll send you more information. Alright, so what I will do. Remember our, what are we calling this? Are we calling this a workshop?
Um, yes. Oh, I didn't, I don't, yeah.
Which one?
It's not in there.
Alright.
Or Kickstarter, that's what I'm calling it.
Are you calling it Kickstarter? Alright, alright, details, uh. Kickstarter, obviously, please go back and change this and make it your own, um but I'm gonna grab November. I'm gonna grab those dates here. I'll send, i- is this in person or a Zoom link?
Yes, Zoom.
Alright.
I'm gonna send it Zoom the night before.
Alright, I will send a Zoom link. Uh to you the night before, or you could actually, you could give them the link and tell them to save it. Um.
Okay.
Or I'll send you a reminder. Uh, a day and an hour before each call, right? Um, so this is, we're we're reminding them what they signed up for here, right? Uh and then we're giving them the guide and we're asking them to respond and then let's also go ahead and um. Enable this message, oh, that's down here. There we go. Um so yeah, now it should work, right? This this campaign, this campaign needed to be attached. Here, which it wasn't, and that's why they weren't receiving any emails. And also that day zero was disabled, so they weren't going to receive anything right away anyway, even if it was. But now we've got that address, definitely go in after the call today. Make the, make your modifications to that uh day zero email in this campaign. Uh and then um you might want to modify the tags just a little bit because it's not August twenty twenty or. You know, beat the heat or March, right?
Yeah, you know what it is, those tags are um marked according to where I met those people.
Oh, so are they already in your system with those tags?
Yes.
Oh, okay, so what you wanna do is actually, when you're going to invite everyone. You're actually gonna go to your contacts and then you're going to filter for these tags.
Okay.
So the, these are the tags, so what you put here is what's going to be new, applied to those contacts. So if you, if this is April's lead. And she signs up here, she's also now going to have all these other tags that might not actually apply to her.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so um so what I would do here is just put uh tame your cravings. Um Kickstarter. Right, or whatever uh you want to um maybe spell it correctly. Anyway, so put a tag here that actually corresponds to this thing and this thing only. Um so that you can, you know, find those contacts specifically. Now, all those other contacts that you wanna send this to, once you've got this done, right? Uh and and you you save, uh you grab the link to this. You're gonna take that link and you're going to filter your contacts for all those tags and then send this to.
Okay.
And then when they sign up, all those people are gonna have this new tag.
Nice, okay.
Does that make sense?
Okay, yes, it does. I was thinking tags like you do when you're doing a post and you tag someone and they get it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it's the opposite, it's the opposite, okay.
Yeah, yeah, this is what's going to tag them when they opt in. Um and the final piece, and I wouldn't fool around with this since you're launching this today, but generally speaking. It's best to have, like, if somebody just said, if they say yes to something right now. We need to be really mindful of what we want them to say yes to next and don't give them too many options. So, in this case, again, what you've done here, they're gonna get a pop-up after they register. That's going to share all of the beautiful information that you put right here, which is great. And then we're gonna send them to a confirmation page that says, go check your email. It would be optimal, and again, there's not a problem here, but it would be optimal for you to just have. Us, a a different confirmation page that you just used for this funnel that has all of this information. And go check your email in the same place. Right? And then instead of having this show message after registration, you would just be sending them to the confirmation page for tame your cravings. Does that make sense?
So, yes, um so we can do that, I I trust you. So what you're saying is have that bu- blank in the middle, right?
Yes, we're not gonna use it at all.
Message, okay.
Yes, that's right, that's right. We're gonna forego all of this and let go of that.
Take, okay.
And then we're gonna go to this confirmation page. I know you have a, you have a basic built-in confirmation page. Um or not built-in, but you you have a a beautiful, simple one. Um what we're gonna do here is we are going to duplicate this page. And this is going to be, what is the name of this again? Tame your cravings?
Um tame your cravings, yeah.
Okay, so this is the tame your cravings confirmation. Alright, so we need to go to that page.
So could I change my picture there?
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah, we're actually gonna change it.
Put, okay.
We'll just put the same information that you had had in the um. In the other one, although I'm not seeing where you had it uploaded uh into your system. So it might be something that you have further down, but yeah, you can modify that, here's what I did. I've clicked on your photo here and I've clicked replace. Uh and then, and then browse, or you can upload from your device. We could also just go ahead and put, I mean, you've got so many great stock images here. Um, we can just swap for her. Um.
Yeah.
Right, and then here we can also take that stuff that we had. Um on that page. And pop it in here as well. Alright, let's just see what this is looking like. Alright, it's a little bit too much, um oops. We wanna edit this. Whole section here and just kind of tie it all together. Alright, I'm gonna replace this with this. Alright, get ready to dive in the world. And I think we've, we've already talked about this um. Here, and we've got other stuff coming via email. Alright, so this is what we'll do. Just gonna take all of this and just kind of shrink it down just a touch, we'll make it all maybe eighteen, perfect. And that's gonna look a lot nicer, so excited to have you join us. Check your email, I'm gonna ma- make this bold. Cuz that's what we really want to draw their eyes to first. Perfect, looking forward to this. Okay, yeah, so this would be the page that we'll send them to. Uh and now we can go back here and we can find our. Tame your cravings confirmation, done, save. Yeah, and so now you can filter your contacts, send them this link. Sign me up. There you go, so now they're going to a page that references what they just signed up for, right? And of course, they can get in touch with you if they don't. Um, if they don't see the email, I of course have just received the email from you in that day zero of the campaign. Which is this one. And then from that point forward. You know, you can modify this rather. Yeah, exactly. So what I might do, um because when, when is the, let's look at the schedule, November eighteenth uh through twentieth. Um so what I might consider doing before you start sharing this uh is. Add some more messages to this and then make this date-based.
Okay.
So that, that way you can actually take that Zoom link and put in like. You know, here's, we're about to go live, right? We could send it on the specific date, right? Um. Or your other option would be, um I don't, obviously you do need to change this cuz if we're not talking about better sleep, right? You might not have modified this one yet, so definitely give some time to this campaign before you start sending this out. But your other option is going to be uh to uh to go to your contacts. And well, I'm just gonna look for myself cuz I don't wanna show any of your contacts here. Um so you're gonna go and filter your contacts. Uh change that tag, it's misspelled, delete it. You're gonna wanna modi- yeah, modify the tag on that landing page, but whatever the tag is that you put on this landing page. Is the one that you're gonna search for to send out uh to to the people that you want to invite to go to that landing page, does that make sense?
Yes, so one more question, those other two emails, um it it says the number one and four. So does that represent the day that it will be sent out?
It's an interval, yeah, so it's the number of days ahead of time, unless you change that campaign settings to being date-based, right? So if it's date-based, then you're going to want to kind of play around with when you want the the first message to send. So if you're gonna start sending this out uh today, uh and you don't have, uh it's, you know, it's several weeks until you actually have these classes. Then you can have like a drip of emails going out, you know, on very specific days leading up to when it's time. So I don't think that you're a premium uh in your plan level and or or I I didn't, I'm not sure that I saw uh that you have the um. The date and time option on your campaign, it's okay if you don't. Um, what I would do is for the time-sensitive stuff, like we're about to go live, right? Um schedule that, right? Filter your contacts for the people with that tag. And schedule a broadcast to go out an hour before with the Zoom link. Um and then, of course, you know, our our default time send for campaigns is five P M Central U S time. Uh so.
Okay.
You can send the day before reminder, of course, um at that point. Um or you could say, you know, we'll be live in just a little bit cuz you're doing this um at seven P M, I think you're Eastern. Uh so that's six P M Central, so yeah, I mean, our default time is five P M, so that's like right before. So you could also just use our default send time for this.
Okay, okay, thank you. That was very, very helpful cuz I was lost. I've been working on it for like five days and I'm like, ah, okay, alright, thank you.
Yeah, you've got it, and now you've got this. Yeah, you've got it. And now you've got this. You can do it over and over again, as I know, I know you do stay busy with this stuff.
I try. All right, thank you. Thank you, everyone. I have to jump off now. All right, have a good day.
You too, you too. All right, we have such incredible people doing beautiful work. You, you saw Paula making gorgeous websites. Sean does not give herself enough credit. She has such a beautiful, vibrant website and, and just brand presence generally. So much inspiration to be found. I hope you guys are connecting with each other in our Facebook group. There's a lot of inspiration there, whether you're just getting started or you are diving into the more complex features and options that we have available, like the two ladies are that, that you saw here today. There is something for you at every level here and we're here to help you on that journey. So if you ever do feel lost, like Sean sent me an email this morning and I was like, well, you just hop on the call with us today and we just figured that out. We're here for you. So remember, check out the Success Academy inside of your system. If you want to find replays for calls like these, if you want to find short videos, check out our help center. And if you would like to have live help, there are several options available there for you. So thank you guys for sticking around, being such an inspiration for the work that we do. We wouldn't be here without you. And of course, we'll be back here same time next week. Take care, everybody.